Let us rise for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to our May twenty-second, MSD Pike Township School Board. We will start off with, for the good of the cause, if there are any patrons who would like to use this platform, you have three minutes, and you will start by stating your name.
Mr. President, Board, Dr. Young, I'm Marty Hofer. I service the Secretary of the Pike Township Educational Foundation, and as you know, we have a twofold mission, to support and recognize students and staff throughout the year. This year at Senior Night, just a couple of weeks ago, we awarded over seventy thousand dollars in scholarships, which is always one of the highlights of the year. This year, we were able to put in, due to a very generous donor, our second book vending machine in an elementary school, which just makes me smile. And so, also, one of part of our mission is to recognize and thank all staff members, and we do that each May by giving a small gift to everyone, from bus drivers and instructional assistants, same gift all the way up to Dr. Young. I watch his be hand-delivered, so I would like to give to each of you tonight, a four-ounce chocolate bar, actually made by a Pike family, which makes them all that much sweeter, that we're supporting a local business, while we thank our teachers and staff across the district. So, thank you for your support of the foundation. We would love to see you at our next event, which is the golf outing on June twelfth. It is at Twin Lakes Golf Course, which is on Ninety-sixth Street, so if you have questions, you could send them my way. I'm sure, oh, I was going to point at Mr. Gruber, but I know he is also getting foursomes together, so you could be in touch with him as well. So, we would love to see you at the golf outing on June twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for the good of the cause? All right, we'll move on to Spotlight on Pike, Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see you all again. Happy Last Student Day, the 2024-2025 school year. We had so much to celebrate this year, and it's literally just rolling in as I'm presenting. I just looked at Twitter, and Pike tennis beat the International School in the sectional semifinal, and will play rebuff in the championship, so good luck to them. Congratulations on their season. It has been stellar. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see it or not, we'll share it on our social media next week, but they did something really fun this year. They invited their families out and had a tennis tournament with their athletes and their athletes' families. So, this was a first annual thing that will probably become a tradition. In addition, our boys are in action, track and field at their sectionals, and we already had a relay team named a sectional championship in the eight-hundred meter, so congratulations to them, Ms. Mo. Hopefully, the weather is going to hold out, so they can finish the competition. Our Pike High School Girls Track and Field Team were the sectional runners-up, runner-ups, with several individual and relay championships, some personal bests, and multiple athletes advancing to regional competition. On June twenty-eighth, so this is just a save-the-date type thing, but it's very cool, Pike High School graduate and current Seattle Seahawk, Mike Darrell, will come home to host his first annual Free Camp and Community Fun Day at Pike High School. The event will include drills, haircuts, game, food, guest appearances by Colts players, autographs, and more. Registration will begin at nine AM, and the events and activities are scheduled to take place from ten AM to three PM. So, this time of year, you know, it's end of the year performances, college signings, and celebrations, and Indy is also the month of May, and our schools get into the racing spirit. That was evidenced by a couple of events that we had the opportunity to witness. For example, Central and Eastbrook Elementary Schools both hosted Kendy five-hundreds, and they are every bit as cute as they sound. I'm going to tell you specifically about Central's. They used it to do multiple things. It was a whole-child experience. They sent the materials home with each child. The children built to design their cars with their families. The families then came in for the Kendy five-hundred. On that day, they had celebration stations. They incorporated music. They incorporated math. They had a culmination celebration. They did the race. The families had a picnic outside, and all totaled, they incorporated singing, five motor skills, fitness, and family engagement, and Mrs. McGee shared that it was just one of the most special things. They almost had all of their families in attendance, and they, again, used that as their kindergarten culmination, so the students got medals for their race and certificates for completing their kindergarten year and are going off now, excited to come back as first graders. So, it was just a great community-building activity. In addition, at Eagle Creek and Snacks Crossing this week, actually, I think it was on Tuesday, the students had the opportunity to meet and compete with racecar drivers from Junkos Racing and Arrow McLaren, so we want to thank them for coming out and teaching our students a little bit more about the Indy five-hundred. Last but never least, we want to thank the generous donors listed on this evening's agenda. The Pike Township Education Foundation donated one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars to refill book vending machines at Eagle Creek Elementary School, and crowdfunding supplied books for the amazing sixth graders at Lincoln Middle School. Mr. Ollie Ward donated two thousand thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents to Snacks Crossing Elementary School's Young Women's, Young Women of Purpose Program. Apex donated five thousand dollars to our Teachers Appreciation Event. Mr. Willie Mathis from PerfectApparel.com donated a printing press and screen print dryer for an estimated value of eight thousand dollars. The Old Spaghetti Factory donated nine hundred and twenty-six dollars worth of coupons for participants in the Pike Distance Kids Camp, and Chartwell's Compass Group North America donated two thousand five hundred dollars for the Red Double Dash. We thank them for their generosity and support.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our reports to the board, Alumni Excellence, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. For those individuals who might be here this evening or might be watching online, who may not be familiar with the fact that, once a month, we, at a board meeting, celebrate a Pike alumnus who is doing amazing things as a professional, and I'm really excited this evening because the person we're highlighting probably doesn't even need an introduction, because she is so well-known right here in Pike Township. But I won't go into details, because I know we have a video to share. So, with that, we'll start the video.
Hello, my name is Lauren Holliday. I am Pike High School graduate, class of two thousand and four, and I currently serve as the proud Assistant Principal at Deer Run Elementary School. I started here at Pike Township as a fourth grader at College Park, matriculated through going to both the New Lincoln and then New Augusta North, and then graduating from Pike. After graduating from Pike, I went to Ball State University, where I majored in elementary education. I graduated from Ball State and came back home to Pike. I started at Lincoln Middle School and wasn't too sure about being in the classroom of middle school anyway, and ended up going and doing behavior support at Eastbrook for many, many years. And then, from there, I really missed being in the classroom, so I went back to the classroom. I've been able to serve at Guyan Creek Elementary, Guyan Creek Middle, New Augusta South, and now I proudly serve here at Deer Run Elementary School. A good day or normal day here as Assistant Principal is ever-changing. I think I have a schedule or plan, and the plan ends up happening for me. I go out to buses where I greet our students. I often do walkthroughs, so check on all teachers, you know, give a thumbs up, making sure the days are going. I'm giving high fives to students, just checking in on them and how they're doing and getting the day started. Oftentimes, I'll have meetings. I'll have core meetings, or I will have an ACR meeting. And then, as we go towards the end of the day, we call dismissal, and then I'm out at buses saying goodbye to my scholars and start getting on their buses, making sure that that's running smoothly, and then dismissing buses. And that's a typical quiet day as an Assistant Principal here at Deer Run. So, there are a few educators that influenced me. I had Ms. Abdullah, which I believe her name is Ms. Swain now. She was my webpage design teacher. She would always push me a little bit more. Web design wasn't my, it was a little active, so it's not necessarily something that I needed, but something that was out of my comfort and out of my expertise. And so, she would always give challenges, and I would think I did a webpage design, because back then, you had to be able to code and do HTML and all those things. We didn't have AI to help us come along and just type in what you wanted. And what I thought was good, she would say, nope, Lauren, try again. And so, just definitely would push me a little bit more out of my comfort zone, and just knowing that I can do things that are a little more challenging and not minor. Being a proud Pike alumni, I believe my message to parents, students, is to not give up, to continue striving, to do your best, to know that there are going to be roadblocks. There are going to be times where you're like, oh, my gosh, what is going on? But then, you'll, you know, it'll work out. It'll work out. There was a time where I was in school, and I was like, you know what? Teaching isn't for me. And here we are today. Here I am, being able to serve my community that I still live in, that I grew up in, and who helped me become the lady that I am today.
You know, as a Pike graduate myself, I kind of had the same thoughts graduating, that education wasn't for me. But in a time that we have a shortage of educators, I think it's so powerful that our children, day in and day out, can see educators that were sitting in the exact same seats that they were in, smiling and enjoying the work that they do. I think that's a great recruiting tool, but it lets our children know that education is a viable field. It's an important field, and, you know, thank you for being a model. This time, I'd love to have you come up and give the board an opportunity to share any comments or ask questions.
Thank you so much for your service to the district. Your smile is amazing, so I'm sure when the kids jump off the bus, they can't wait to see you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank you for sharing or making your legacy a part of Pike's legacy. I hope that the students realize, by your example, of what they can become. You know, you go through our system, then you come back and help make our system even better. And so, that goes along to saying that Pike is the gift that we didn't know that we needed. So, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Wester.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the example you set for our babies. I am curious, and not to put you on the spot, but coming back to your home district where you grew up, what was the biggest challenge coming back here as a teacher after growing up here?
Well, the biggest, I left Pike, and it's like, I'm not coming back. Nope, you can't make me. And then, I graduated from Ball State, so I need a job. So, as far as coming back, you know, I really just wanted to give students, honestly, a face that I, that you can, being a Pike student. I came through Pike. My siblings came through Pike, and just knowing that, to give them what I was given. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for leaving, staying in Indiana, going to Ball State, and then coming back to Pike and giving us what you learned, and seeing the look on your face and the proudness and the compassion that you have for those students. It's, like I said, that smile is eye-catching. I'm sure those kids just wake up and they see you, and they smile. They can't help but catch the smile.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
First of all, I want to thank you for what you do for this district. You need to know you're invaluable. I think as board members, we need to let people like yourself know how invaluable you are at this particular intersection in the lives of children. And the personality that you are projecting is contagious, and we hope that what you are pouring into those children, they will be able to seek higher education, come back and be a part of the teaching family of Pike as well. Thank you for what you do, and stay intelligently radiant, because we need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you, Moore.
Thank you. Next, we have the Superintendents Above and Beyond Award Recognition, Dr. Hunter.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, I have the high honor of introducing Ms. Hillary Zortman, the Director of Pike High School's Career and Technical Education Department, as she presents the Superintendent Above and Beyond Award.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young.
Good evening.
My name is Hillary Zortman, and I am the proud, very proud, Director of Pike Career and STEM Center located at Pike High School. Our center creates opportunities for our Pike High School students to earn industry-recognized credentials and study and pursue legitimate career pathways in demanding and high-need fields. It is my privilege to nominate Ms. Mashonda Gilmore for the Superintendent's Above and Beyond Award. Ms. Gilmore has served in the district for ten years at Pike Career and STEM Center, and since being promoted to our Department Chair of the Pike Career and STEM Center in twenty-three, twenty-four school year, she has fully embodied the mantra of turning your passion into a paycheck. At the student level, she supports our students academically, socially, and her work with our cosmetology and barbering students has led to a significant increase in positive outcomes over the past several years. Her persistence to be a warm demander and hold high expectations of her students led to an increase from two certifications in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to eleven certifications in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, with students are still taking the tests this year and studying, so let them finish and see our results. She is also the sponsor of our largest, what we call Career and Tech Student Organization called Skills USA. This involves four of our programs, and the sponsorship requires much responsibility. There are regional and state competitions. The programs involved are criminal justice, HVAC, barbering, cosmetology, and smart manufacturing. So, all of those programs have experiences that Ms. Gilmore helps with, outside school hours on Saturdays, sometimes on Sundays, trying to get transportation places so that the students can go and compete in these regional and state competitions and represent Pike Career and STEM Center. From the staff level, her role now as the CTE Department Chair is, she's doing great at instructional leadership during our PLCs. She is persistent in pursuing educational excellence. You have seen the level of instruction change in our classrooms, and she's assisted with developing our instructors. Her positive attitude and willingness to help where it is needed and dedication have helped with hosting several first-time events this year. So, we are proud that we began our middle school career fair this year at each one of our middle schools. She helped with the planning and assisting of that, and our first CTE award ceremony recognizing students. Additionally, her coaching helped us onboard three new instructors this year, and Ms. Gilmore has exceptional communication skills, helping to develop trust within her staff and build team confidence through praise and respond to delicate situations when needed. She's responsive and available throughout the day, and anytime instructors need to contact her in the evening. Despite all of those professional responsibilities, she's pursuing her master's degree coursework at Ball State to get a director's license. So, it is my pleasure to nominate Ms. Mashonda Gilmore for the
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, I have the honor of introducing Ms. Caitlin Rove, the Principal of Guyan Creek Elementary School, and Assistant Principal. Ms. Andrew Crew, the Assistant Principal of Guyan Creek Elementary School, as they present the Superintendent Above and Beyond Award.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. It is our privilege to be here this evening to present our Guyan Creek Elementary School Above and Beyond Award winner. Ms. Margarita Romo joined our staff this year as our Front Office Assistant. She has been an incredible asset to our team. She is friendly, helpful, and a quick learner, always ready to take on any task, asked of her with a smile and a positive attitude. Ms. Romo is always thinking proactively and asks questions to ensure that she understands what the expectations are and ensure that the best outcome in all situations occurs, whether it is seeking support for a family needing resources or helping to prepare for a school-wide event. She has developed a strong rapport with both students and families, serving as an invaluable bridge through her bilingual support, making school more accessible to all. We have seen a significant increase in our parent engagement with our families that speak Spanish, and I know that that is in huge part thanks to Ms. Romo. We are blessed to have her be the bright, shining face that welcomes all visitors, students, and staff at Guyan Creek Elementary, and it is our pleasure to present her with this award this evening.
Okay, moving back to reports to the board, referendum update, Mr. Greg Foster and Monet Gray.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young.
Good evening.
We're excited here to present to you the referendum update. So, as you recall, the rationale for the referendum focused on three specific areas. Four and a half million dollars was allocated to our commitment to sustaining the programs and staff support for our ESER dollars. The second area, nine million dollars, was allocated annually to attract and retain staff. And third, one million dollars was allocated annually to enhance safety and security measures here. Ms. Gray will provide more details on the first specific area, and then afterwards, I will discuss the other two areas. Ms. Gray?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Superintendent Young. As we continue to honor the commitments made through the referendum, we'd like to provide an update on how those funds are being used to sustain essential programs and staffing throughout our district. So, Bucket One, which is the programming and staff support through ESER. Bucket One represents a portion of the referendum funds that have been assigned to ensure the continuation of key roles and services that were formerly funded through ESER. So, those are academic interventionists, certified teaching staff, counselors, social workers, district specialists, our Director of Health and Wellness, and essential technology and infrastructure investments like laptops, Chromebooks, monitors, Cisco network equipment, and other supports to support the modern equitable learning and environments. From a financial perspective, a total of three million, thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars has been invested in these referendum-aligned priorities between July twenty-twenty-four and March twenty-twenty-five. Out of that amount, one million, nine hundred, thirty-three thousand, five hundred, forty-six dollars in expenses were from July twenty-twenty-four to December twenty-twenty-four, and this covered salaries, benefits, and learning loss programming and materials. Due to the timing of when the referendum dollars could be spent, which was January twenty-twenty-five, these expenses were initially funded through the Education Fund during the second half of twenty-twenty-four, and then reallocated to the referendum fund in twenty-twenty-five to align when we were allowed to spend that referendum money and to reimburse the Education Fund. An additional one million, one hundred, five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars was spent from January to March of twenty-twenty-five, supporting that same programming, and also added investments in Chromebook replacements and software upgrades. Every dollar reflects a conscious investment in our students' academic recovery, their emotional and mental health, and the tools needed for success in today's classrooms. They are foundational to our mission of academic excellence and equitable support for every single student. Now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Foster to talk about the attracting and retaining staff.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Attracting and retaining staff was the second specific area. So, January through March of twenty-twenty-five, salaries and benefits were paid out for nine hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Also, as a first semester attendance stipend was also paid out of there. Now, for a total of one million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, three thirty-four. Now, that may appear low. We are anticipating doing another reimbursement in July of twenty-twenty-five. So, as a reminder that the referendum fund is a property tax-driven fund, so we'll receive our property tax distributions in June and December of each year. That's also when our reporting period is for June, is ending June and December of each year, and that fund cannot be negative. So, once we actually close July, we'll have an idea of our actual property tax distribution. That way, we'll know how much additional salaries and benefits we can reclass and reimburse ourselves into this fund. The third specific area was enhanced safety and security. So, the task force is already met. They include members of law enforcement, Pike staff, administrators, building level, and central athletic and transportation. They've already been beginning to meet. They meet up every two weeks, and additional meetings can be scheduled as needed. One of the priorities that the safety task force has identified is the Pike High School Weapons Detection System. So, all that combined, for total expenditures, January through March, is four million, five-hundred, two thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And we're available for any questions.
Yes, as it relates to Mr. Foster, the enhanced safety and security, we have been talking about the Weapons Detection System for some time. Is there anything being discussed about the replacement of the fleet of vehicles for our police officers? Mr. Foster, Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
Then I'll come to you, Dr. Young. Who can answer that?
He doesn't serve on the task force, but he could share from the numbers perspective.
Do we have anybody here from the task force? Could you tell us when that will happen, if it will happen?
Yeah, so, in our first meeting, one of the things that we did was, we began having a discussion about what all the needs are, right? So, everyone contributes. Based on your in-particular lens, the area in which you serve, what are some needs you have? So, this great list was developed first meeting. So, now, what we're doing moving forward is, we're trying to weigh those down, prioritize most important, and in the order in which those items would be purchased and implemented. So, that's really the next step. Now, to your point, were vehicles on that list? Yes, it's on that list.
And you have a list of prioritization, so where is it on that list, since that's been formed yet?
It's just been, right now, It's just been, right now, it's just been items listed as needs. So the next step will be to determine what order in prioritizing the list. But the first meeting was just, hey, based on what you see in your individual position, in your school, or wherever you may serve in the district, what are you seeing that could help make the district more safe? And now what we'll do is we'll take the big list and begin to narrow it down to specific recommendations that will come out of that.
Doing these security meetings, is it possible for us to get the minutes of those meetings?
Yes, we can.
Since you've had one, and we haven't received anything yet? If I'm not mistaken, have we, President?
So, not because we haven't asked him. And so, thank you for your explanation on that. So take the time that you need with those meetings, and then you'll be able to fulfill Dr. Moore's request. Any more questions to the referendum update?
Oh, yes. Request, we have a lot going on in the district, and sometimes it is confusing to community. Sometimes it would be good to help community to see the difference between referendum dollars being spent. For instance, you got the baseball field, you got a lot of things going on there, a lot of people that will come to me and say, are those referendum dollars? I would have to tell them no, because they're not. But sometimes when we do things that are going to go public, sometimes we ought to be able to give the disclaimer that they're not referendum dollars, and sometimes remind the community of how the referendum dollars are spent. Because I get a lot of calls when you all, and we as a board approve certain things, and things begin to move, and people see construction and things, first thing they say, is that the referendum dollars? Because there's no communication about how the community is understanding the referendum dollars are moving, because it's their tax dollars. And so it would be good to be able to show the difference between capital improvement that has been approved by the board, superintendent's recommendation approved by the board, versus referendum dollars that are being spent. Because some people don't understand operational and capital. They don't understand those ideas, but when they see things happening, they say, well, there are some referendum dollars. It might not.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying? I hope you do.
Yeah, I do, and I'm just trying to think, so a couple of things. One, as we give updates, we will post, there's actually a tab on the district website that is for referendum information. So what we'll do is we'll take this presentation, and we will add it to the website, plus all additional updates. I think another thing we're working on, and Ms. Dorsey's helped in taking the lead, is send information out over the summer, like a mailer, so families will get that information. And as you're thinking, I'm just processing, maybe even somewhere on the website, we could just share, because the answer is, the referendum does not pay for any capital projects. No building, nothing like that, so maybe even on the website, we can put something there, or even as, you know...
I can also suggest it also. If I could offer a suggestion, probably, like in these reports here, if we could just probably perhaps a presentation, and include it in your presentation, that way the board could see, and then it's also public and recorded too.
Right, just reminders.
Yeah, so it could be as simple as that, putting it in your presentation.
Yeah, because we do.
Would that suffice?
Yeah, yeah. It's really not about me, it's about community.
No, I'm just saying, but your request.
Yeah, but it's about community, and all I'm doing is letting you know what the community's thinking.
Sure.
And because if you need another referendum, where are you going to go?
The community.
My point is that.
One question that I have, just for stating purposes, for people who may tune in later, how long is the referendum dollars for? How many years do we have that for? Just as a reminder.
Absolutely.
Eight years.
Eight years. And about how much of the referendum dollars are we allowed to spend per year?
How much are we?
How much of the years, how much per year is it given to us?
Each year, we establish a budget for the subsequent year.
We anticipate, what, fourteen and a half million per year?
Per year, fourteen and a half.
That's what we, yep.
We did not make it this year, though, did we? Fourteen and a half? Did we get to fourteen and a half?
We will. One of the things that Mr. Foster was referencing is we don't get it in a lump sum.
Right.
So a lot of the dollars you see now, as it comes in, we reimburse ourselves from last semester. So for example, we committed to continuing all those supports we had in place for ESER.
Right.
But the money didn't hit until January. So that means, as a district, we paid for that ourselves, that first semester, and as money comes in, each allotment will pay ourselves back. So yes, I believe we will get there. Now, part of it is what's actually collected, but yes, I believe we'll be right where we need to be.
So the cycle is beginning now?
Yes, yes, yes. And so what our goal is, is to come back and, like we've done now, maybe once a quarter, just give a public presentation and let you know kind of what's been spent. And what I heard from the board is it'd be beneficial to them. Whenever we talk about it, just say, hey, now remember, the referendum doesn't cover any capital projects, it just covers these three buckets.
Right.
Just to make sure we hammer that home, because I understand you guys are getting those questions.
Yeah, very good, very good.
Before you say, do you have one more question? With the changes that have been made, now legislature is out, changes to property tax and everything, do we know or do we anticipate that there'll be any impact to how much money we bring in from the referendum dollars based on how their calculations have changed? I don't know a better way to ask it.
Yeah, if I may, we're still modeling those out, and actually, that's one of the things Dr. Young supports, is bringing on policy analytics. And so that'll really help us do, they're a company that actually gets the granular analysis down to the parcel level, and really be able to forecast the impacts of Senate Bill One and the changes to our net assessed value, to be able to give us a better, clearer picture of what challenges we have to deal with.
And I would add to that, no one has figured it out yet.
And I didn't expect the answer, yeah.
Yeah, so we're all trying to figure out what the impacts of Senate Bill One will be. And so once we get some more confident numbers and answers, and again, we think policy analytics can help us out. Matter of fact, they're working across the state to help school districts try to figure out what the impact will be, we'll make sure we bring information back to the board.
Honestly, I'm more asked that question, just so the public can hear and understand, while there is a good side, everyone wants to pay less taxes, there is another side to that, and for us to be transparent about that.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Foster, perhaps you know, maybe not, Dr. Young, have we had to share our referendum dollars at all?
So, Mr. Quatton Bush is over there. So...
What was your question?
Have we had to share our referendum dollars?
Why do we?
Have we had to?
Yes, so have we, any lotments paid out at this particular time?
Not at this time, but we're estimating, we'll find that out when we have the property tax.
You said, "know what now"? I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. We'll find that out when we get our property tax distribution, when they actually determine.
But you said we were estimating that we will have to, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes, we believe we will. So we reached out, and we have, I'm trying to think the correct term, appealed that based on the requirements, and I believe it's Quatton Bush, we never got a response.
Okay, all right. And I think this is information that is pertinent for all of us to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Any more questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. Next, we have website update, Ms. Dorsey and Dan Orman-Kicher.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. We are very excited to have the opportunity to, before you this evening, to talk about our website. Our current website is actually four years old. We took one year to build it out, and then it's been up for three years. And as you know, in three years, with technology and website design, things become obsolete. So in October, we've been reviewing the websites of surrounding districts, colleges, and businesses to get a sense for what the industry standard was, and look for any ways that we could potentially improve or enhance what we have in terms of our design and layout. After doing that, we landed upon the Canton template. It is the same website company that we currently use, but the design is a bit different. Can you turn that on for me? As you can see right now, and Dan's going to start a video here, that will scroll through, the banner image is much larger, as opposed to ours right now, which has a smaller image and then a text box. You'll also see that the navigation is a bit more streamlined, but it would allow us to still have the same menu items that our families are used to, but just again, in a more engaging and easier-to-navigate manner. If you scroll down the page, you'll see that it has what you call a sticky heading, and we like that too, because that means when you scroll down our website, if you need to go somewhere else, you don't have to scroll back up to the top. That top menu will be with you no matter where you scroll on the page. We keep our six boxes, but they're edge-to-edge. So again, that's more visually appealing, allows us to tell our story with images. We kept our quick links. Our news and events section is also more attractive, and I think it's a lot easier to see, that you can click through and see several news items, and same with our upcoming events. This is our favorite part, it adds a testimonial section. So we would be able to add our story from the standpoint of members of our Pike community and Pike family. And then the last change is the footer, and I hope you'll pay special attention to this because, although we cannot show you in their template, because this is actually final site, they wouldn't allow us to Pike-ify it, we did Pike-ify it. So now we'll show you what it will look like, and we're going to, oh, sorry, we're going to have to scroll through this, because again, it's just kind of a slide that we created, but we branded it with our Pike, and it looks so much better. It was attractive before. It's going to take a second to load.
I feel like there should be a drum roll.
Okay, so here you have our students at the top with our banner. Again, this wouldn't be a huge change for our families who are accustomed to visiting our website, they know where they can find our apartments, our schools, and our different categories on our website. If you've noticed, we have the categories, we have two menus. The first menu is really by audience, so if I'm a family, if I click on family, then I'm going to find content for me probably as a parent or guardian. There's also community, which will be information for community, students, and staff. So we still keep that, we have our enlarged banner, we have our quick links, which is also a commonly-used section of our website, then we have our beautiful Pike community in that section, which again is that edge-to-edge, which is just a little bit more engaging and appealing. We have our news and events, then we have our testimonials from members of our Pike community. And then at the bottom, what we liked is we were able to customize that to include our Pike at a glance, because we are very proud of our data and statistics. So we did not lose that, were we to upgrade to this particular version of the website. Daniel, I'm struggling. Oh, sorry. Okay. We got a little too fancy. So again, just to recap, the Canton template highlights are that sticky header that follows you wherever you scroll, the larger header images, the quick links, the edge-to-edge six squares, the news and events that are more streamlined and easier to navigate, the testimonials, and then that footer image that still allows us to highlight our wonderful data. When we talked to the company, there were two options. One of the options was a five-panel swap. What we just showed you is actually more than that. For the five-panel swap, the price would have been twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and it would have entailed us having to do the transition throughout the entire website. We have an amazing navigation specialist named Nicole Faulkner, who is a lead on this, and she spoke to the company, and she actually negotiated the theme flex, which is what we showed you, which will include creative services, which would mean we could have this throughout our entire district. So we would still keep that same formatting, no matter what department or what school you visited. It was supposed to be fifteen thousand dollars, but she got them to change the price to ten thousand dollars. So we would actually be getting the bigger, better redesign for cheaper than if we just did a five-panel swap, and it would also decrease the amount of work for our staff. Because I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but Nicole does a great job. She develops a guidance document that she shares with the buildings. Every school has someone who manages their website, every department has someone who manages their department pages. She provides training, and she works with them, so she really helps in terms of making sure we've got a standard process. At the beginning of each year, we do a website check, at the end of each year, we do a website cleanup, and so it will just, having everything unified, I think, be much easier to stay on top of.
You will have the statement of purpose and mission statement on there, right?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Secondly, how creative would this site be for you? For instance, just like tonight, Dr. Young did the Alumni Excellence Award. Say after he does the Alumni Excellence Award on Thursday, Friday could it go on? Or next week could it go on? Could that personality be on the website?
Yes, and it's currently there, but what this will allow us to do is put it in that banner.
My point exactly.
Uh-huh.
Superintendent Above and Beyond Recognition, when those pictures are taken, will they be able to go on those sites?
They would be in the news section. We also put a lot of that, like we have almost three pillars in terms of like that written communication, so we're doing it in our Pike Proud newsletter that goes out every week. We also do it on our social media, and then our social media currently feeds to our website. So that would be a difference. So sometimes if you're not seeing it on our website, like in the actual website component right now, if you scroll down where we have our Facebook page, our Facebook feed, you'll see that information there, because we're always posting it, and because now it's linked there, that's the section that appears.
Being a native of Pike and attending Pike, how creative are you, you plan to be with this new site?
The testimonials? I cannot be more excited. Like, we've already been talking about, okay, let's do this, let's do this, okay, and we have students in mind, we have families in mind, we have community members in mind, we have teachers in mind, like the ability to tell people about Pike in Pike people's own words, right? Like, because if you're in Pike, like, you love Pike, it is special, and there is an energy, and there is a passion for Pike that we get to hear and see and experience when we're out at school events or in the community and working with different constituencies, that to be able to capture that on our website, that's huge.
Will you be, I'm sorry, Dr. Young.
And you are planning on using family also as testimony?
Yes, absolutely.
What about, say for instance, sporting events? You know, our girls are doing it, so, you know, just like I saw the live movement on there, is it possible to put some of those, some of the game on there? Is that possible, yeah?
Like a stint, like a...
A clip.
A clip, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Some clips? Are we going to be able to do clips?
We can probably do clips. We have to be careful. A lot of times, like with sports, it's a little bit easier, but if someone has streaming rights, then we have to be a little bit careful. With performing arts, what we run into, sometimes we would love to share that, but there are copyright issues. We also always have to be careful, because we have to know, like, do we have photo permissions for the students that may be captured in those images? So that's also something that we plan to look at this summer, is just shoring that up, so it's not as big of a challenge as it currently can be.
Oh, ladies first.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. One, I love this. One of the things that we learned at the Indiana School Board Association Conference last year was how powerful it is when public schools tell their story. People think they understand what happens here, because they're hearing it from other voices who don't always have our best interests in mind.
Yes.
But when we can tell our own story, and then the community can judge for themselves, we position ourselves, I think, in a space where we, you know, there's a reason why we love being here, there's a reason why our students are graduating at such a high rate, and allow us to share our story.
Absolutely. I think that's why with Dr. Young and what Mr. Borgenkecker do with the Alumni Excellence is so powerful, because one of the beautiful things about Pike is there are so many perspectives, experiences, and lenses, and to be able to see that, hear that, feel that, it's, there's nothing more powerful, right? Like...
And, you know, I just might say, on behalf of board members of the past, your Regina Randolphs and your Ronnie Fords and your others, we've all been talking about this, so this is nothing new. We're just glad now that we're getting a chance to promote our story in a better way, because I think all of us have had that same concern, is getting, that same, what Ms. Barnes said, getting our story out and not letting anyone tell it for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're extremely excited.
So I get in a little more of the techy stuff, so I'm assuming we've checked this out, that everything you're getting ready to do whenever it's viewed on mobile, because that's how most people view websites anymore, that it will still have that attractive look, and it'll operate cleanly for everyone.
Yes, there is a mobile feature.
Is it proper to market it right now? Since we're out of school, is there some things we can do on the current website to market it that it's coming?
Well, right now it wouldn't, because it hasn't been presented, and you haven't approved it, but...
But you understand what I'm saying. I'm talking about when that time comes.
So, so, right, so what our, yeah, our goal tonight was I asked for them to present this to you all. I, I wanna get your feedback.
Yeah.
For me, I really like the theme flex and what we're able to get. But based on what you guys share with me, hey, Dr. Young, here's something we'd love to be able to see. If it fits into that mold and model, then what I'll do is come back and ask for approval. And then once we seek approval, then what we'll do is I'll work with the team and get a timeline on when we could launch it. So based between approval and then the date that we can launch it, then yeah, we can let folks know, hey, stay tuned because we plan on launching a refresh of the website and then we can give that date.
Another thing, Ms. Dorsey, it's good to see you smiling tonight. I know you lost your dad.
Thank you.
And it's good to see you smiling tonight.
Thank you.
Seems like you're getting into your work and we appreciate that.
I don't really get to present to you guys about the communication side, so I'm excited. We've got a lot of things planned and he said I had to stay to the website tonight. That was our focus, but we're excited to share communication updates as well.
I also gave you the date the next time you come and share it too. We just have a lot on the, on the, on the agenda for tonight.
As in the things that we like, I particularly like that you brought out that it would trickle down and all the schools would have this, not just the high school, but having that package where all of them get to take advantage of it, I think is key. Not, not having the us and them in our district. I think that's key.
Absolutely.
A couple of things. Now, is this the complete beta version right now of the changes that are planned to be made?
That would be everything that we showed you in that video, that would be encompassed in that $10,000 amount.
Okay. I remember the last process and for some odd reason, I felt like there was like a think tank and there was also a period of time where, you know, that we had a chance to go and look at it,
We did.
make some more suggestions or see what we, is, are we gonna have that same thing?
We absolutely can. It's, it's whatever you all would like to do. We don't really have a, a specific timeline. We just had the, the idea presented. So we just wanna kind of capture some of the things that it can do. But we absolutely can schedule that where you guys can come look at it, ask questions, yeah, absolutely.
It would, in the 10,000, is the upgrades in there?
Yes, because the last time we did that, like we switched to a new website. This is not a new website. This is final site. It's just changing the components to modernize our website and bring us some of those features that we really loved as we were kind of shopping around.
Yeah, same contract.
But upgrades are going to be included in this new?
Yes. Yeah, the 10,000 would pay for the refresh or the updates that we're, we're, we're speaking of now. But yeah, this is not a new website, new provider, same one, but just since our last one was what, four, five years?
Four years.
Four years. They now have a, an option that we think is better. We just wanna present it to you all and get your thoughts on if it's something worth, you know, continuing to look at and pursue.
Okay. And it's just both of you that's, that's come up with a refresh, correct?
No, Nicole Faulkner, our navigation specialist, is a huge, huge component of the website. We appreciate her so much. She, she helps us with, with this portion. And so she, she is like our lead on this and we work very closely with her.
Okay. Well, I, I for one, I would look forward to the, the period where we get a chance to kind of click around, kind of see how things are going to shape up for, for the, the new refresh and then
Absolutely.
we'll go from there.
All right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to our action items. Action item A, members of the Board of Education, regular meeting, May 8th.
So move, President.
Second.
First and the second, we'll go move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the 25, 2026 Student Parent Handbook, Dr. Bishop.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board and Dr. Young. This evening, I seek approval of action item B, the 2025, 2026 Student Parent Handbooks as presented.
I move we accept the, that we accept this 2025, 2026 Student Parent Handbook as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All right, no questions or comments. We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Human Resource Report. Due to the confidentiality of the report, we want to entertain any questions or comments. Dr. Hunter.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the HR report as presented.
I move that the Human Resource Report be accepted and approved.
I second.
Okay, first and a second, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you, sir.
Action item D, request approval for the new FACS textbooks for Pike High School. Mr. Emmon.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. I'm seeking approval for action item D, approval for new family and consumer science textbooks for Pike High School as presented.
So move.
So second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? No questions or comments. We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Emmon. Next, action item E, School Board Resolution Preliminary approving the First Amendment to the Lease of a Public Hearing and Insurance of Bonds and Related Matters. Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. I present item E, the school, the resolution preliminary approving the First Amendment to the Lease for a public hearing and issuance of the bonds and related matters. I recommend approval as presented.
I move that it be approved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? No questions or comments. We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And three more for Mr. Foster. I'd like to combine action items F, G and H for approval. Mr. Foster, again.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. I recommend approval of items F, G and H. They recommend, they are the monthly claims allowance contracts and the donations. I recommend your approval as presented.
I recommend that we approve items F, G and H as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll move on to vote. All in favor for action items F, G and H, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Lastly, we have Board Member Items. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last two days, I was in the district, had a great time. Today is the last day of school. I'm going to let other board members tell you to, to rest and check on your mental illness and all of that. But what I wanna do tonight, because I don't say much at this point, but sometimes we don't tell people thank you. I wanna thank you for your dedication, our staff, administrative staff, Ms. Lori, what she does for us.
Yes.
Dr. Young, so many others on the team. I appreciate your hard work. I might not say much, but I watch very closely. I'm deeply grateful for the dedication I saw at the graduation. I've since, I attended four graduations today, yesterday, yesterday, today and yesterday. I wanna thank you for your tireless effort to create positive learning environments for our children. I appreciate your hard work in every area of our school system. Words really cannot express how grateful I am for what we're doing in Pike in the educational and political climate that we're in now. I wanna thank you for your guidance, support of these students. Especially the, our students who I, special learning type of students that I had an opportunity to see. I sit back because I, I get kind of emotional when I see those kids who struggle to learn. And I wanna thank you for your support, all of you. If nobody ever tells you, you might not do it right all the time, but you are invaluable to the lives of children. And if nobody else tells you that, I wanna thank all of you for what I saw the last two days, how you have prepared children to walk across the stage. And in the midst of what you go through, as teachers, administrators, I wanna thank you for sticking with it and not giving up because we have some difficult days ahead. The bill was signed today and it's gonna flow downhill. And we don't have time to fight with one another. We have to discuss how we're going to continue to make sure our children pass IREDS, to make sure our children have everything that they need and that we respect our employees. We learn how to support one another in every area that we can to keep Pike at a level that other people can look in and say, I wanna be a part of the education system of Pike. Thank you once again for what you do and I pray for you every night because it's a rough job. And I wanna thank all of you for what you do. That's all I gotta say. I'll let my sister tell you to have a good vacation. She'll tell you that.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Mrs. Wilson.
I don't wanna follow that. So I'm gonna make mine short and sweet. Again, I, I reiterate what he says, that it takes you to sit in here to sacrifice your evenings on Thursdays. Every Thursday, come here and to present the things that you have to present to the Board. And then for us to be able to take those things and try to manifest them to what you want and what's best for the community and what's best for the school of all the schools, elementary, middle schools. So for that, I do say thank you. I too had the opportunity to enjoy immensely seeing the graduation at Pike High School in the, in the PPA, I'm telling you all this, so you guys will go next year to watch those kids that were in wheelchairs, the ones that couldn't keep their hands together, the ones that were bouncing around. But they were able to graduate from Pike High School with their caps and their bounds on. And for, to that speaks, speaks immensely of the departments that are working and the principal in Pike that says that, you know what? We want all of our kids to experience, in one way or another, to be able to say, I graduated from Pike High School. So that was great to see that and of course, I got to hug them and they all trampled all over me, so I got a lot of love. And then I also wanted to say, head off his, my hats off to the track, to the tennis, to sports, academics, because we seem to be flourishing in all of them. We can't say happy, say congratulations to all of them individually, but collectively, we can. And again, I wanna say thank you guys for your service because we can't do this without you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mr. Hooper.
All right. I have to say, only been on the Board, I guess, ending the fifth month here. These last two weeks have without a doubt been the most fun two weeks that we have possibly had. There's been so much going on. It has been exciting. One, I wanna congratulate Mr. Anderson and Mrs. Barnes on getting exemplary status with the ISBA. Had a great time, got to walk the Red Devil Dash, didn't do much dashing at it, but I got to enjoy that. It was a great time. They didn't dash any, but I did get to meet, and I wanna give a shout out to Edward, my friend I made on the course, and then to Aleah Smith, who finished the 1K event. Try not to cry as I say this, but Aleah especially, her heart and her determination and her spirit. Every time we use the hashtag Pike Proud, that is what it exemplifies. And I just wanted to give her and her family a shout out. That was, that was so impressive. Let's see, one of the other things, all the graduations, all the ceremonies, Senior Honors Night, seeing all of the scholarships that, that our students earned. I heard the number and I don't wanna get it wrong, but it was an astounding number of scholarships that, that have been given out this year. Was just amazing. And I do wanna put a commercial in. I'm already petitioning for Mr. Polarski to get to be the speaker at the Next Treasures because I have never heard a commercial for Pike Township like I heard that night at Senior Honors Night. It was, it was amazing. And so I wanna thank him for that. The Exceptional Learners Breakfast, Mr. Ruth and all of his team, having an exceptional learner myself at home. It, it just does my heart proud. I love seeing what we're doing for all, all the kids in our system, school system. The Nathaniel Jones Early Learning Center graduation the other night, that was everything that the Pike community is about. The Pike community loves to come out, they love to celebrate, and you've never seen them celebrate. You see them celebrate their babies getting out and moving on into kindergarten. So that was, that was tremendous. And Ms. Blanden, I don't think that there isn't a Fortune 500 company out there that wouldn't be better off without her leading them. That she is an incredible leader and just what she's doing with that, that school of ours, it was wonderful. The Life Skills graduation today, got a chance to run to my old stomping grounds, GCMS, and celebrate with them as well. And with, with all of those things wrapped up, just personally, I've gotta say, all of those things are an example of why diversity and equity and inclusion are important. And if anybody out there has a problem with, with that being something that is a focus and, and something that, that we have as a community, next year, this time, get with me. My phone number is public. Follow me around. Go to all these places and then tell me you've got a problem with it because Pike does it and they do it better than anybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Dr. Webster.
Wow. Actually, let me shout out to Mrs. Foster and to Mr. Dobbs. Those are the events that I attended over the last week, two special little people that are important to me. And they move on, another grade. And so we were able to, it's funny with, with, with the Spring Concert over at New Augusta North, the first of the year, we, we, we listened to that group and they were bump, bump, bump. Dr. Bishop, you know, because your son is there. And they were, they were, they were bump, the bump, the bump, bump, bump. And I was saying, are y'all serious? But this, this Spring Concert, they took us to, they took us to a place. And that attached to, and actually, they were thanking the Board for helping them keep the arts. And so that just really took us somewhere. We were proud, parents were proud. And then of course, Ms. Foster is doing a very unique job with New Augusta South and the children over there. So I'm just grateful. I'm, I'm, I'm happy. I'm thankful for what we're doing here in Pike. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Webster. Mrs. Barnes.
I too really enjoy May. There's so many wonderful celebrations that happen. The Exceptional Learners Breakfast that Mr. Ruth puts together is just an outstanding testament. It's a great place for parents and for students to be honored. And I enjoyed that. I too, as promised, was at the Red Devil Dash. I did not dash either. You know, I thought I was gonna come in last, but I ended up passing some people in the home stretch. I was really surprised. But it was a lot of fun. So thank you, Mr. Jacob. It is certainly one of my highlights as a Board Member to be the representative on your council because I, I get to, I get to participate in my passion. That's, that's one of my passions too. So I appreciate the invitation, participation, the medal. I loved it all. It was great. And the weather was fantastic. And I too wanna graduate, congratulate our Board as a collective. We're also honored by the Indiana School Board Association for exemplary, for another exemplary governance award. And it'll be on one of our trophies over there.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Ms. Kelly.
Wow. May, again, is an awesome time in Pike. We can't be everywhere, but many of us were all around everywhere. I too, I too was at the Exceptional Learners Breakfast, the Red Devil Dash. I didn't get to make it to all the different schools because I was at my building where I teach. But we're so grateful for our staff on last evening. Staff was honored. We appreciate you, as was stated, so much in all that you do and pour into our students and our district. Today was the last day, so I am going Today was the last day, so I am going to say my normal.
Yes.
It is time.
Say your name.
To refresh.
Yes.
Refill, refuel, so that in July we can come back stronger and do it again for our kids. Our kids are worth it, but we have to be where we need to be refreshed through all the things Mr. Jacobs has helped our district have. When I go to other districts, there's nowhere with the wellness program that we have. So very grateful for what Pike has. An additional shout out to this board. On Tuesday, there was, the two of our board members were recognized by ISBA. And the board was recognized for another year of our level of training. And we had five of our seven members attend. That was, I think, in my time on the board, the first time we had that many of us attend that event and actually get to participate in, um, so looking forward to our involvement with our continued, our continued training and improvement of our governance and how we run the district and wanting to serve our students. And the number, I believe it was $70,000 that was given in scholarships at, um, senior night.
Yeah, it was.
As always, our educational foundation is phenomenal with raising funds. I'm excited to hear what the end of the Red Devil Dash total, I, I can't wait for that. And then I'll just end with, oh, congratulations to our, those who received their, the above and beyond recognition because you truly do showcase and highlight what we do best, and that's taking care of our children. And then the, the assistant principal that was recognized for, um, an outstanding, outstanding alumni. Love that we are Pike Proud. And even though we go away from Pike, we come back and jump back in and get right back working with our students and our community. And we will see everyone at graduation next week.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Dr. Young.
Well, I will echo the sentiments of congratulations to the board collectively and also to our individual board members that have been recognized. And, um, it takes a lot to get to this point here where we send our students off and get ready to graduate another class. So it's, it's, uh, an opportunity for us to exhale and it's very, uh, emotional. So, so that I don't break down and start crying. I'll just say that I could not be more proud of our students, our staff and the, and, and our, in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Well, in closing, I just want to, um, uh, thank and echo, also echo the same sentiments for the Exceptional Learners Breakfast, uh, is I'm always so happy to, uh, see our students, uh, achieve, uh, their goals and also, uh, move on to the next level. But I also want to get a special, um, shout out to Mr. Ruth and his team, uh, and the unsung heroes, um, because they do a lot. They do a lot. They raise money. They do a lot for those kids. And you can see five scholarships, $2,500, uh, in five scholarships. So, uh, that is a true labor of love and they true have the passion to see Pike and our students, uh, get better. Also, um, thank you, uh, Ms. Barnes, uh, for taking the mantle, uh, to help us get organized to receive these awards. Uh, Mrs. Barnes, you have, you know, pushed us and I appreciate that to get us ready and, uh, for professional development. Because that's what we're, uh, the community elects us, uh, to be the best board members that we can be. So thank you very much and congratulations to the rest of the board members on their achievements and that. And lastly, I was over at College Park. Uh, Mr. Bosick is doing a wonderful job over there for their field day. I try to get over there every year for their field day. Um, to, today they had a Big Bouncy House obstacle course. And, uh, Dr. Majors and I took our shoes off and all 215 pounds of me. Identify with that. We, uh, we raced through for the kids and we raced through the obstacle course. And thank you, Dr. Majors, for allowing me to win. But with that being said, uh, oh, yes, yes, yes. Um, that was part of the reason why Dr. Young mentioned that. He didn't want to get emotional. But his son is gonna graduate, uh, with us, uh, this year. And that's an accomplishment all in itself. So, uh, we look forward to that. And thank you for all your hard work, uh, for our staff and our administration and everything that you do. With that being said, if we get a motion to adjourn the meeting, so move, Mr. President.
Second.
Second, all right. Have a good evening, everyone.
Do not leave without your.